Ms. Morgan, it looks like we're all here. Will you please call roll and let's get started. Chair Langley, here.
Here.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Ms. Mus-
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Kirkpatrick.
Here.
And Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
Look at us. Mm-hmm, that's awesome. Okay, we're going to just very quickly take care of a little housekeeping. We have some minutes to approve from March 24th, May 5th, May 23rd, and May 26th. We've gotten behind on this. Is there a motion to accept the minutes? Has anyone had an opportunity to look over those?
I motion to accept the minutes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and those are approved. Dr. Miller, why don't you and Bo come on up and sign in, and we will get started. We all know why we're here today. Mr. Duke, would you like to come up first and present anything that you may have, and then we'll allow Dr. Miller and Bo to come up after that? And then, of course, we will have the opportunity, if you'd like to speak, either one of you, that would be fine, too.
Madam Chair, I'm just gonna basically reiterate the reasons for your considering this, or what's been requested. I have nothing really to add at this point. You have a copy of studies and reports provided by the applicant. But again, we're talking about 115 Maple Street, which is a contributing structure to the National Register Daniel Pratt Historic District. Original construction is somewhere around 1860. The request is twofold. One is demolition of the existing structure, and then, secondly, construction of a new residential structure on the site of the demolished structure. If you recall, my recommendation at this point is really to deal with only the demolition. You haven't been really presented what we would consider to be sufficient plans, and I don't think the applicant believes they're sufficient for approval of a new structure. What you'd be looking for in that case is something similar to what you received when you approved the structure recently on First Street. So I think the primary consideration today is a request for demolition. This has been heard 1st of May for the rescheduled April meeting. Y'all toured the house, or had the opportunity to tour the house on May the 23rd, and then you also received a report from the applicant that was prepared by a structural engineer. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this point, or just sit down and let y'all deliberate.
Why don't you sit down, and then we'll have you back up, work those thighs. Okay, Dr. Miller, come on up. Is there anything else that you would like to add that we have not, that you haven't had the opportunity to present at our previous meeting?
Not exactly, but if I could share a couple of thoughts, just because Jean has not heard my, you know, what I've shared before, and if you would grant me that privilege, I know it'll be redundant for some of you, but I, and I'll be brief. I've wanted, Lynn and I've wanted to move downtown for many years, and my first effort in that regard, and Joel was a part of this exploration, was when the Cobb property burned. And I wanted to look at that in terms of doing a building that, obviously, in that location would be more business-oriented on the street level, but basically replicate what had been there with living quarters on the second floor. And not, at that time, Councilman Striplin, he hadn't got on the council, but he was with HPPRA, and I'd had some dialogue with him in that regard. So I share all that with you, although that did not end up making and coming to fruition. It does illustrate that this is not, you know, just off the cuff. I want to, you know, buy a piece of property that, obviously, is a prime piece of property, one of a kind. So against that background, it is a plan, a dream, that Lynn and I would build our house, that I will refer to as that kind of final residence as we, you know, move into retirement. She retired at the end of March, and I'm probably five or six years to go barring anything unforeseen in my work life. So first grandkid, you know, from a few weeks ago was born, so we're in that stage of our lives. So this would certainly be a dream come through, come true. I will share with you also that I'm acutely aware that this is, the nature of this request, a demolition, is not something this board has dealt with before. And this piece of property is in the inventory that, you know, helps to qualify this area for the federal designation. And I don't, you know, I don't lightly dismiss that consideration, or what you guys are facing as a body, to make a decision on this request. And I think I've said at both times that, you know, I'll, we'll part friends, I'll be respectful of what you do. I've sat on that dais in different ways and had, you know, the same sorts of dynamics come before me in terms of council items to consider. So against that background, after the first meeting, basically fulfilled, I think, were the three requests on the part of this body. One was to get a structural engineer's report, and the second was to, basically, with Bo and Joel as well, arrange for a tour of the property. And then, thirdly, to sort of provide a sketch of what I envisioned as this house. I would qualify that by saying, obviously, it will fit, and it will come before this body if it, we have that opportunity to make sure that it is consistent with those requirements. But I do want to say, as a caveat, those sketches I had pulled out of some Southern Living magazines, I've been, you know, saving house plan books for probably 10 or 15 years. So it wasn't that that's the house I'm going to build. I think that if we get the opportunity, that it will be the sort of thing that the design of the house, while it would obviously be very much a good fit for this part of Prattville, downtown Prattville, and the historic district, it will be very unique in terms of how it designed, is designed, because that's a very unique piece of property. But it will be along those lines, and it's not going to be some big fancy kind of whatever. So I followed up with those three deliverables, if you will, at the request of this group. So I don't really have anything else to add, and I appreciate you letting me what you guys have already, you know, have knowledge of, so.
Okay, while Dr. Miller is up here, are there any questions at this point for Dr. Miller?
I would, I would add that, you know, the request for the demolition wasn't out of the chute where we were thinking. We were more than happy to look at and explore, and in that regard, Skip Jones helped do some preliminary estimates around issues, questions about moving part, or a fraction of the house, or the whole house. Those sorts of things have all been sort of looked at, a relocation of part of the house. And when I say part, really, you're trying to talk more about what would be identified as the original structure, either on the property or off of the property. So should you decide that this is approvable, I'm not going to rush out there and do anything, you know, in a short timeframe. I certainly would give some thought to some ideas that have recently been brought to my attention. You know, I had a sense that, for whatever I did, when you start to talk about the cost that would, and I know y'all don't have to figure out costs, but I do. I mean, that's not what you need to base your decision on, but it is very much a part of how I come to this project. And, you know, I was thinking, you got the plumbing and electrical and so on and so forth that you've got to do, it's basically a rebuild. Not to mention the fact that the flow of the house is just not 21st century at all for a modern family, when you consider the add-ons and so on. But there may be some alternate approaches that don't go that far into a pocketbook, if you will, that, you know, maybe you could isolate and maintain a piece of the property. And I'm looking at Lenora because I hadn't thought of that, but I'm just not, I'm not, I'm still not past looking at everything, but you need to make your decision as though I'm going to demolish. So, thank you.
Would you two, would you two like to speak either for or against this request at this time? We want to give you that opportunity to, and if you'll sign in, that would be appreciated.
I didn't really intend to speak, but as I sat here, I started thinking about what we have downtown. And all of you know, I've been involved with our Heritage Association for many years, and we have fought for the continuation and the preservation of as much of our history as we possibly can save. In about 1997, 98, and this is probably on record somewhere here at the city aisle, the Historic Commission wrote a letter to Mayor Whitstone saying that our status as a historic district was threatened to be removed because we had lost so many structures. A lot of that was due to churches, building, parking lots. Some of them were control burns that the city fire department did when somebody wanted to remove a building, and so we've lost a lot of our history. Most of the homes in downtown Prattville, we have very few old homes left. And I want to suggest, as Tom has said, there may be a compromise on some of this. I've been in the house, I didn't get to go the day that you toured, but I have been in it. It is very chopped up, a lot of the historical integrity of the house has been altered. But the architectural features on this house are outstanding. The columns, I don't know if you've ever looked at the front porch columns, they are really unique to most porch columns, the gingerbread trim and that sort of thing. And I would just like to suggest that possibly, Tom, it might be possible that, you know, the front porch or the two front rooms might be incorporated into a new structure behind that, or even just saving the porch itself. Again, you know, we're, if you move a structure, it alters its historical status. Sometimes that's the best solution, but it's not, you know, it's not really, maybe sometimes that's the only solution, but that's not the best solution. You lose some of that historical integrity when you move a building. So I just, I feel like we need to be very conscious of what we have in Prattville. In 1984, when downtown was put on the historic district, we have the National Register, and you can all see that, it's very thick. Not every building in downtown was a contributing property, because some of them had already been altered or were modern. But the, when the letter was received in the late 1990s, we had already lost 34 structures that were part of the historic district. We've lost the entire Mill Village, all of those structures. We've lost homes that, where church parking lots are now. And like I say, we have so few residential homes left to show what Prattville was at one time. And, you know, I recognize that the house itself would be expensive to redo the whole house, but possibly a portion of it could be kept, and I think that would be important.
Thank you. Mr. Scoggins, would you like to come up? Are you sure? Well, we'll need you, I'm sorry, we'll need you to sign in and make it official, Mr. Scoggins. Thank you.
Are we there? Okay. First, with the acoustics in here and my terrible hearing, I haven't been able to follow much that was said. I understand the general context. I have provided a statement to the board members in advance because I wasn't sure I'd be able to be here. And I can't say that I am for or against this, either one. Historically speaking, I would rate the house eight or nine on a scale of 10. It's very important historically. On the other hand, it's going to cost quite a price to restore it, maintain it in its We have, as Ed said, we've lost a lot of our historic buildings over the past several years, many years, and a compromise of some sort. I would like to see, my personal feeling, some kind of compromise wherein at least a part of the house is maintained, and preferably where it is. Because this, in particular, the fact that it was, in some fashion, it was linked to Daniel Pratt. This was not just the Fay House, or one of the historic houses that happens to be historic because it's old. It was also a history of Pratt and his relatives. His niece and her husband built that house and lived in it for 10, 12 years. And in my estimation, that does make it important. On the other hand, I cannot see, make a mandate that it must be restored to its original condition. That would be virtually impossible, and certainly exorbitant in cost. And that's really about all I have to say. Thank you for your attention and your time.
Thank you.
Yes. I don't know to whom this should be addressed, but what part of the structure is the most important as historical significance is? If we, if we, if someone was to preserve it, what part of that house, because it's been added on to multiple times, what should be preserved?
Oh, I'm asking whomever can-
Yeah, Joel can, Wayne, too. We- I think from, you know, Mr. Davis, from Joel, from walking through the house, it's those front two rooms that have that dual chimney structure that's been, you know, closed in largely in the middle. And then, the front porch, I think there's some question about, and I think earlier we were thinking there was an L-shaped part, and then the two apartments in the back, and all that porch on the right, all of that subsequent through the years add-on. We're not sure about the L, so for sure, looking at the flooring and things like that. And there are folks with a whole lot more experience than I have, but we think it's that front rectangle.
Mr. Davis?
I've got to concur with that. I think that it is likely that the porch and probably the second room, added on the west side, let's just call it the third room on the west side of the building, was probably along with the porch, an early addition. But it's likely that that, the core of the house is the front, that has two doors off the front. Everything else, it's obvious that it's been added. And in fact, if you're familiar with the sandboard maps that came into being after, after the war between the states, they, they, you can see in progression of that house that, one map, it's, you know, it's lacking that back room, and then the next one's added, and the next one, they connected them together. So it's obvious that the house changed organically over time. There was really nothing said about it, they just added as they needed. But the original structure is that, the front area that Mr. Miller was talking about.
Mr. Evans?
How long has this property been on the market?
Approximately eight months.
Eight months, okay. Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
You know, I feel it's our responsibility as a commission to do, to do diligence in following our guidelines concerning historic demolition, and due diligence is something we need to do. This house is part of the Pratt heritage, as his niece and his, and as Wayne said, her husband built and lived in it for many years. So I'd like to make a motion. All right, I move that we approve demolition of the house at 115 Maple Street with stipulation that the original house be advertised for 20, 120 days in the Montgomery Advertiser, to be given away to anyone who will move it to a new location and restore it as much as possible to the original design. This will give the commission and Mr. Miller time to discuss the design of his new dwelling. That's my motion. Scott?
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Sorry, is there any discussion?
I have a little bit of a problem of just doing a blanket demolition, because I think it's very important that, especially whatever is able to be preserved, especially from the porch, or, you know, materials or whatever, I think that's important, rather than just say demolition. So if I could add that as part of friendly amendment, maybe.
I understand. It's just we haven't even advertised, or let anybody know that it's available to be moved, and if it could be moved free, somebody would be willing to do that, it'd be better than having it fall in.
I agree with that. I was saying that if someone did not, if I understood your motion, it was like, if nobody comes forward in 120 days, then it can be completely demolished. I was just saying, at the end of, at the end of the 120 days, could it be put in the motion that everything that can be preserved about the front there be done as a request to Dr. Miller?
That's not my motion, though, Jean.
I have a question for Dr. Miller. Has there been any specific investigation regarding preserving the porch and the front two rooms, and what that cost would be? Because we can talk about it, but if it ends up being an additional $150,000 that you're not prepared to spend just on that one area, then that point is moot.
And those were my thoughts. You know, first, I thought the 120 days, I don't want to be locked out of potentially doing something with some portion of it, you know? But to your question, that, beyond what Skip Jones did, and I think you've got a copy of that, and that was to isolate and move, do nothing else except stabilize the backside of that original rectangle, and to move it to a different part of that same property. And, you know, that's a whole lot cheaper than moving it somewhere, you got to do power lines and that whole nine-yard kind of stuff. So that's the only cost sorts of things that we have gotten. The thing that Lenora had shared with me is to stimulate my thinking, could that front original rectangle be something akin to a non-air-conditioned sort of, you wouldn't go the whole nine yards, but you might have a garden-type thing, not, you know, still where it is, but work around that. At the end of the day, that's the, the answer to your question is not beyond what I've just shared, that Skip came forth, and then some of the references Mr. Davis made. But that, that's the conundrum, that's the, that's the whole thing of the unknown, and a lot of that you don't get into till you actually get somebody to really spec those things out in a serious way. I, you know, Skip is doing this because he's in that business. I've not had any financial thing with him, but I have with Mr. Davis for that study. So I guess I'm going a long way around the world to say, no, we didn't carry it that far to start getting that detail.
So that would be an unknown cost, that-
Yeah. And if you're, you know, the other thing is that, one of the very first things, and it preceded a lot of this more downstream stuff, was in talking with Joel, this house came on the market in, I guess, about August, August of- And had a rapid sale, relatively rapid. I made an offer at that point in time, and somebody, you know, obviously, made a higher offer, and then it was surveyed, and as I understand it, the plans there didn't matriculate because the property wasn't big enough to do what this buyer had in mind, so it comes back on the market. It was originally listed at $249,999, and when it came back on the market, it was $229,999. I'm not paying that, I promise you, but it's, it's not a cheap piece of property, because, again, you're not going to find another piece of property like this, which is, I mean, it's, it's one of a kind, you already know that. So, did I answer your question? I'm sorry.
Madam Chairperson, I'd like to speak to, as part of this discussion of the motion, and Mr. Miller has discussed this with us in the other meetings, is, looking at and studying what's there now, the four columns in the front seem to be in really good condition. The balustrade, though, is not in good condition, but there is a design there. And I think you had mentioned that you would be open to perhaps using some of the architectural elements of that house in your new house, if possible. And I feel like it's not going to be feasible to move the first central core of that house due to the condition that it's in. And reading the structural engineer's report, I feel it's not going to be feasible to move those front rooms. But I would like you to consider, as part of this discussion, is trying to work, a few of the architectural elements exist there. Then when someone comes by and says, you know, that's the columns on the old house, or that's the balustrade, or that's, you know, certain details that was on the old house, just like as part of this discussion, if you would, you know, consider that.
Excuse me, what?
If Dr. Miller had, I guess, reaffirming that he said he would, I think, previously, some of the certain elements, if you could work them back in the new design of the house, that you would do that.
Yeah, and I like old stuff. I've even talked about, is there a way, if you walked around the house, there's those two columns that had the clothes line? two columns that had the closed line? Believe it or not, I'm envisioning those with hanging baskets and things like that. I like keeping those pieces that sort of connect you to, you know, and I've had the same thought, if you look at that, I guess it's a car shed. I mean, that's got character, but it's, all of those posts are just very sturdy. It's that tin top that has rusted through. And so a little bit of sandblasting and repainting, I mean, that's got all kinds of potential. So I say all that to say that those would definitely be some things that I would, I would want to do because I would want to do them, not because you guys wanted me to do them.
Ms. Bautwell, do you have a question? Is that appropriate for her to come back up and... No? Okay. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
Now, I'll amend my motion that if any part of that, Mr. Miller wants to retain and like what we were talking about, that'd be fine with me. But I'll rephrase my motion.
But it is at his discretion. Correct.
Right.
I don't know how we would do this or if we could do this, but at the end of the 120 days, have it some way so that we reconvene to see, to get the plans of what Dr. and Mrs. Miller want to do. And then we will have what is feasible to save about this historical, as Ms. Cheves was saying.
Well, I know Mr. Miller's not in a huge hurry, but I thought he might want to be moving on to try to let us look at possibly a design and if he wants to incorporate some of the, the old house, that'd be wonderful if we could do that, if he would do it.
I believe that Dr. Miller is fully committed to utilizing whatever part of the structure he can in the new building. But then if we advertise it to be given away, that does not allow him an opportunity to do so and keep those items in their original location.
Do you, according to this structural report, moving it would be, I cannot see any future in anybody coming in as a stranger and wanting to move that house. I'm speaking personally from the structural report and everything else. I think if any of it can be saved, it should be saved where it is. And we're talking to your motion, I guess.
Oh, yeah, sure.
But I like, I have one question for Dr. Miller. Anywhere other than on that exact spot?
Yeah, and thank you for reminding me of something that went out of my head when I was up here earlier. Joel, early on, when I'm talking to him about this property, be sure and get a certificate of elevation. So that was, I did have another several hundred dollar expense in that regard. You've got the certificate of elevation?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, you know, revealed that part of the property is in the floodplain, so, and there's a gradual slope if you're looking, if you're on the site. So where the current house and probably why they built the house where they did, I don't know. It predated the flood wall, whatever the right term, I mean, it predate, who knows how it used to have... But anyway, my point is that is the safest, most insurable, most, I mean, that, and it's the, it's the most expensive. It's a fairly deep section of it, so, so yes, I have thought through all of that in terms of trying to, I thought, could I build a house on a different part of the property and then over time, you know, stabilize that one, make sure no leaks, this, that, and the other, and then, you know, look at opportunities and options. Because this is kind of, I mean, I hope your sense is this is a last resort kind of request. Jean, I appreciate, you know, the potential to have that level of control and if that's what the group wants to do, but from my perspective, going into this with that amount of unknown, you know, just, it's, it's, it's going to put me in a, in a difficult, so...
One more question. Do you have the elevation report?
I can share that.
Okay. We'd like, I'd like to see it.
I can share that and I can share the other. What I would ask though is those, you know, be considered whatever you'd call proprietary because if, if I'm not able to buy it, the next person, they need to just benefit from me now spending, I think, I guess, $950 between the two different studies, so...
As City's Floodplane Administrator, I will tell you that the existing structure is elevated higher than the regulated floodplain and the adjacent grade, meaning the ground around the house itself is actually out of the regulated floodplain. So as you head further east on that property, then you start to drift into the, and it really is just that kind of movement, is a kind of a drift deeper into the, into the floodplain. But it doesn't, the flood elevation there is not that high. I mean, a new structure could be elevated, but it would be an expense. It would have to be elevated, whereas where the existing structure is located, there's no requirement for elevation to meet the flood standards.
When I look at your proposed, Dr. Miller's proposed house, they are built on a conventional foundation, not on a slab. Is that correct?
Those weren't meant to portray that.
I know that, I understand that, but you are thinking of a conventional foundation of, rather than a slab.
I don't have an idea. My architect's going to have to help me figure out, you know, I'm not in that, that's not my expertise.
Okay. Okay. You've answered.
Yeah.
That's good.
I can tell you where I live now, behind the post office, and I'll just share this with you. I am the only house on a crawl space. Every other house, and I have about 10 snakes that have lived under there for the last 20 years. And I collect a pile of snake skins every year. And we have a happy coexistence. So I'm not against a crawl space.
Thank you. There's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Yes, we do have a motion on the floor at this time. Is there any further discussion? Ready to vote on that motion? Okay, who seconded the motion? Larry did. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you vote?
Nay.
Nay.
Madam Chair, will you state that for the record, those that favor and those that oppose?
Yes, those in favor. Mr. Barrett?
Can I ask a question?
Not, not in the middle of voting, right?
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Cheves?
My question was about the motion, so therefore I can, but not without the answer to my question, no.
The motion is not the end, another motion can be made if necessary.
Okay. You would like to know all, who voted? Mr. Barrett, Mr. Price, Mr. Smith, yea. Ms. Cheves did not vote. Miss?
Nay.
Nay. And nay. What did you say?
The motion failed.
Yeah. Ms. Cheves, would you, Ms. Musgrove, excuse me, would you like to ask a question at this time?
My question was, part of the motion still to advertise the house for giveaway over the 120 days?
Yes.
Thank you.
That, I don't know if this is appropriate. Joel's not paying attention, so that is, that is my biggest concern, is that I agree with Ms. Musgrove in that I would like the home to have the opportunity for Dr. Miller to utilize the, what can be utilized in the home. It does bother me to advertise it in the Montgomery Advertiser and who knows who, where, that kind of thing. I would hate for the opportunity for it to be taken outside of the city of Prattwell. That's a, that's a concern for me too.
Well, wouldn't it, wouldn't the ultimate say so on if it's going to be given away following Dr. Miller?
That was not in the motion.
Well, it should have been.
Yeah, I'm just going to, I was trying to talk to Dr. Miller about the way I understood the motion, and I'm just going to, if it's okay, Mr. Price stated the way I understood it. Essentially, y'all were allowing, saying that demolition was allowed, but you were suspending that for basically six months and then requiring that it be advertised at, to be available, to be given away. But that did not preclude Dr. Miller from doing something else with it on site. Is that what I'm understanding?
Right.
Okay. That's just, that's the way I thought I understood your motion, I just wasn't sure. You're not, you're not mandating by your motion...
I don't understand that, I'm sorry.
You're not mandating by your motion that it be moved offsite, just that you're suspending action for six months till, to give it an opportunity to be used in some fashion. Okay.
Well, it's 120 days.
For 120 days.
Yeah.
And that there be some active motion to make it known that the structure might be available for moving.
Doesn't mean that he can, he has to agree with that.
True.
Who owns the property right now? Dr. Miller, do you own it?
No. He is a contractor.
Okay.
He is a contractor on the property.
Then he has no say so if within the 20 days, he has no say so to refuse that it be moved, the way I understand it. Is that correct, Mr. Duke?
Yeah, I don't have any status right now as, I don't own the property, I've got the contract, so that it's got the contingencies, so, and I, Lenora knows who owns it, this date, she knows, yeah, better.
Well, my question was, did you own it? Because that would...
That would enter into whether or not you could disapprove the moving of the house and legally you could not, correct?
I can't do anything with the property right now, so, but it would be, you know, it would be good to make sure we were all on the same page if there was the six months, what that did or didn't mean could happen in the interim. You know, because if I ended up wanting to keep a peace or whatever, you know, I don't want to be, somebody responds to an ad and they, you see, I just, and I don't think that was your intent, but I just, it probably does need to be a little...
But you do have a contract on the property?
I, yeah, buyer's, yeah.
So you would have, wouldn't that give you first right of refusal on anything that happens to it between now and the time you close on it?
You're talking about to wait to close in six months?
Right. If somebody did want to take that off, if the motion passed and somebody came along at day 115 and wanted to haul it off, you would have first right of refusal on that, wouldn't you? If you have, if you have a contract on the property as is?
If I understand your question, you're saying first right of refusal. The only right of refusal Dr. Miller has is to buy or to not buy. He would not have a first right of refusal to move the house or to say someone else could move it.
But if it affects whether or not he would purchase it or not, that would, that would, the seller of the property could say whether or not you could have it, because if, if the guy was going to haul it off to, you know, Michigan and Dr. Miller said, no, I don't, I'm not going to buy the house if he does that.
Can I, can I speak to the contract? The contract is contingent upon your approval of what he wants to do. Once that's done, or not done, that contingency's lifted, or not lifted. If it's lifted, he will close on it, he will own the property and he will have the opportunity to determine who's going to move it at that time. I, I can't imagine that we would put on the current seller the responsibility of determining who's going to move the property or whether or not it can be moved. I mean, that wouldn't be fair to them. So, and certainly that will happen within 120 days after this board makes a decision.
I think the decision needs to be made as to whether or not we deem more important the structure remaining intact at an alternate location or remaining in pieces at its original location with an appropriate backup structure, if you will, that will support the historical pieces that can be utilized.
It seemed like this has sort of gotten out of hand and the question is, should the house, does the house need to be demolished? And my answer to that professionally is, yes, it needs to be demolished, it cannot be saved. So based on all of that information, I move that this committee approve demolishing the house, period.
That's motion. Is there a second?
A second.
And discussion?
Can we add a stipulation that items be preserved, like columns and balustrades and things like that, as is feasible?
Yes, Mr. Duke.
Madam Chair, I'm going to recommend, given the number of conversations going back and forth, if somebody would like to actually make a, an amendment to a motion that it be offered as an amendment, that way it can be cleanly offered, second, and voted on. And that, that would seem to me to be the better way to go about trying to refine where this, this board wants to go. Because I think that y'all are, you know, you may not, may not like the way this is going, but I think you're doing good work to get to something that either you can agree on or can't agree on, but you're getting closer to that in my opinion. But I would recommend some kind of formal amendment to each motion, if that's the way they want to go.
Okay. May I ask a question, Mr. Duke? We, I know we are in the middle of a motion and it has been seconded, however, we have never split this into two different requests, so to speak, so shouldn't we do that?
You don't have to. It seems that your motions were doing that by themselves.
Okay, okay, so that's sufficient, okay. Okay, Ms. Cheves, have you, would you like to put that into a formal amendment to the motion?
Yes, and I apologize for not doing it correctly the first time. I would like to amend the motion to state that any pieces that are physically and structurally sound enough to be utilized in the new structure, like railings, columns, et cetera, be saved.
Who makes that determination?
I would say that would be for a builder, engineer type person. I would say that would be for a builder, engineer-type person.
Probably need to be an architect that makes that call. Somebody that can tell if the, if the, if the piece that they're wanting to salvage is archi, is contributing to the architecture of the property, not just some beam or joist, that it actually contributes to the architecture, like a column.
I think we need to be more specific. I mean, we're just saying, you know, what if this piece is good and, and then Tom says, "No, it's not any good," or the architect? I mean, wouldn't be need to more, more specific if you're going to make it that technic, I mean, go down to that level. We're going to save which beams and which columns and, and that sort of thing? Seems like that's getting a little confusing to me.
I think there's probably going to have to be a level of trust here between Dr. Miller and his builder slash architect as far as I, I believe that they would do what was in the best interest of any piece that he could salvage or restore.
I agree with that. However, this is new ground for us and we have to think about what may come in the future. I would like to see some balance because I don't think, I don't think we have the expertise to say, "Save this piece, throw that one away." I think there does have to be an architect, or I guess architect, not engineer, with some input. And it would seem like to me that we could work together on this without delaying Dr. Miller's timeline. I mean, I think we would be willing to meet as a body if, you know, not every week or whatever, but, you know, at, at times when decisions need to be made without sticking our nose completely in these business. I, you know, it's a, it's a balance here and I don't really know how to do it.
Well, I think we need to be considerate of, of, of who's making, of who is trying to purchase this property. This is, Dr. Miller's been a Prattvillian for a long time and is, I think, has earned, earned the trust of this board among, among others. We need to consider the possibility of that this, that this sale doesn't happen, who's going to buy it then? Who comes after and may not have the same kind of interest in preserving what is preservable that Dr. Miller does? So, the level of trust between Dr. Miller and his architect to work things out, but also a level of trust between this board and Dr. Miller to do the, the right thing that is, that is feasible to do. I mean, the structure has, has laid, has laid bare for a long time and haven't seen anybody really try to do anything to make it, to try to preserve it. And then Dr. Miller comes along to, to do something with the property and I don't, I don't, I don't think we should stand in his way.
I think that's a very good point and I think that's a real, realistic. I did not consider that, but I certainly agree with what you're saying. I stand corrected. Yes, I would like to ask a question, if, if that would be possible.
Restate, please.
Restate, restate the motion? Who made the motion? Would you please restate the motion?
The motion was based on the information that we have on the existing structure, that this committee approved demolition of the structure.
And Ms. Musgrove, the amendment to the motion?
To preserve items such as columns, railings, things that could be incorporated into the new structure as deemed feasibly structurally sound, that could make the transition to the new structure.
Okay. My question is, is this. We're, we're leaving it up to Dr. Miller and the faith that we have in Dr. Miller to, to come in and make this determination along with an, an architect, engineer, whatever. Is there an organization that, say, Dr. Miller states that, "I, I don't really want to use that." You know, "I realize that it's historical. I realize that, that it is still capable of being used, but I just really don't, I don't have a place for that." Is there a, a organization that could take these items from, from the house and store them, have them, just to keep from getting rid of them? Is there any benefit in that, I guess? Windows, doors? I think also we're forgetting that we have to approve his building plans. So the museum, that kind of thing, would not want a part of the baluster? No? Okay. It's a question. I, I mean, I just would, didn't know if, if there's somebody out there that would rather, we'd rather say, "Let's run it by them first," you know, an organization, rather than it, it being out by the curb, so.
I still think we're being too general on, on, on the amendment, Kate. I, I mean, I don't mean to step on your amendment, but it just seems a little general to me.
Well, without an architect or a builder there saying, "This is dust and cannot be used," or "This can be used," we don't know the specifics of what can be saved and what cannot be saved. But I think we can trust Dr. Miller and his team to say anything that they actually would say.
Well, I trust Dr. Miller to say what he can, too. But I, it's got to fit into the building plan, you know? I mean, are we going to, when we approve, when he brings us the plans and we approve it, are we going to have the columns that we're going to save incorporated in the building? Or are we going to have, that's just what I, I don't understand, how we're going to have a building plan if we don't? I mean, how you going to have a plan if you don't know which is, what's going to be saved and what's not?
I think that could get very specific. Um, I understand your point. He could end up using two of the porch columns as decorative columns in the kitchen.
That's the outside. We don't, that's the inside. We don't care about that. But, uh, but, but how's he going to work with the builder? Like, we're going to have to wait until we decide what we're going to say before he can design the house. You can't design a house and, and then stick columns up somewhere that, I mean, just would be confusing to me, how, how you would plan a building, a house like that.
How long would it take, in general, to, to have someone come in and actually know what's salvageable and what's not? I guess, Mr. Duke, I'm addressing that to you.
Ms. Davis, I'd have to say, and I'm going to defer to folks who would know better, but I would say that you're, you're looking at trying to determine, you'd have to determine where you were planning to use them in the new structure to determine whether or not they're salvageable and usable. And the, you know, so one of the, the things I would be asking of this board is that, um, I'll, I'll actually stop. I'll leave, I'll stop with your question and, and just encourage that y'all either, you've, you've got a motion on the floor, you've got a, an amendment. You might want to see if that amendment is going to pass the test and then see if something else needs to be offered.
Do I need to withdraw the amendment?
No, thank you, Ms. Musgrove. Okay, so we're voting on the amendment first and we have had a second to the amendment. So all in favor to the amendment, say aye. Ms. Musgrove and Mr. Smith vote aye. Nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. And the amendment failed. So, but we do have the motion still, which is the original motion of Mr. Smith of demolition, of the approval of demolition of the home.
Correct.
And it has been seconded.
Well, let me just say something. We're still discussing it, right? I think it would be better to try to relocate it than just to demolish it completely. I don't see why it would, it's not going to take that much time to at least try to find somebody and I could, we could say, it's got to be relocated in the Prattville, in the, in Prattville and not in Timbuktu. But instead of just demolish it, wouldn't it be better to advertise and try to save, save part of the, the structure, the main structure? At least give somebody a chance to do it before we just say demolish it. I, demolish it and not advertise. At least somebody might be interested in it because it hadn't been advertised before. Nobody knows about, about it. Somebody might be interested in, in the main, the, the main structure that's the core house.
I think Dr. Miller is interested in preserving what he can of the main house. I think that person you're talking about is here.
I'd like to speak to that discussion. If Dr. Miller, if we give him permission to demolish, remove, he'd be happy for someone to come get the house because it's going to cost a lot of money to move it. So I'd say that's his discretion. We have today approved permission to remove or demolish the house. He's happy for someone to come get it. And I'm sure he'd be happy to advertise it. I'm saying that's his discretion.
I agree. I think, read this report. The house is rotting. It's rotting from the inside out. And if, if you revise your advertisement to say it can be moved within the city limits of Prattville, then it stays, then it stays here if somebody, if somebody wants it. And if nobody wants it in 120 days, then demo, demolish it. Exactly. But make, make the advertisement read, be relocated within the city limits of Prattville.
Is, is the response 120 days or is the move 120 days?
Do we have any study or report that would show whether or not this house would survive a move?
When I was mayor, we moved the Memm's Hotel, which was in a pretty bad shape. And the power company didn't even charge us to move, to, to move the lines when we moved it down here in Pratt Village. So I, I don't know if they'd do the same thing. Depends on how far away they would, somebody might want to move it. But somebody might not even want to move it. But I, I think that'd be worth a chance to take than to lose it completely, unless you want to save a column or two.
The value of these historical properties is in their location as much as the structure itself. This house, we all read this, the structural report. What could be done to it there that might could be saved? But as far as moving it, I don't see that it's structurally possible to move that house.
Well, in that case, at least we try.
Well, with the six additions to the house, it is going to be impossible to move the house, in my professional opinion.
Can't tear those, that back off and have the core house?
With the six additions, it's like, which parts do you move first? Do you just start at the back door and start tearing out? And then what do you have left? I just think it's, it's not feasible to move basically any part of the house because the joists are so rotten under the house and the piers of the bricks is rotting down. I just, based on my opinion of it, I don't think it can be moved.
I'm not saying it can be moved. I'm just saying, what harm is it to advertise and try to get somebody to move it? Somebody might want to move it. I don't, if they don't, we, we're saying it's going, we'll demolish it.
So that should answer that question.
I don't think it makes good business sense to hold up Dr. Miller's plans when if we don't even know whether or not the structure can be shored up to move and would even survive it. And I agree with Ms. Kirkpatrick that the historical value is based on location. If we knew for certain that it could be moved, could survive? Could survive a move? But we don't even know the answer to that question. So how can we dictate that it be offered to be moved?
Well, we wouldn't have a Pratt Village if, if we wouldn't, didn't move any, hadn't moved anything. All those places have been moved in there and it's a nice historical stretch that, that people remember. I mean, and I think there's still a place down there for a structure like that, according to Mr. Bach.
We have an active motion, so, yes, is it appropriate for Dr. Miller to?
Speaking to the motion.
Okay.
Go ahead. No, ladies first.
Several points. One, from the get-go, that was part of the multiple things that, you know, you think about offering it for somebody to move. And I think my understanding of that is if there was an interested party, they would come and do those assessments and they may, as you mentioned, come to the conclusion that it's just not doable. Either it's too costly or it's not structurally able to, to, you know, make that move. And so I sort of see several things sort of moving in tandem. I would definitely, if I get the opportunity, offer that for it to be moved. But I'm also, at the same time, looking at it again. I've walked through it 50,000 times. That's what you do when you, you know, want something. But I, I would be assessing it anew and afresh and I would be getting a whole lot more serious because a lot of, when I say serious, a lot of what I've not been able to do is I can't keep spending money with these unknowns or with the prospect that, you know, all these different pieces are going to be, you know, reviewed and deliberated and, you know, and, and there's value in that, but at the same time, it's going to, it's, I just don't know that that, that's going to work from a trying to move forward standpoint, you know? And I, I want to, while I've got the mic, I want to tell you how, how humbling it is, you know, when you talk in terms of the trust and whatnot. I, I'll do my best not to let you down, but I've, again, there's some reality factors here, you know? And I have heard some other comments, you know, I don't, I, I thought it was going to be super competitive when it came back on the market, you know? And the realtor that's handling, the owner side of it is breathing down Bo's neck, following every single move. And we've said, you know, if we need to free this up so you can move forward to the next buyer, you know, we'll do that because I don't need to be unfair to them either. I mean, they're waiting, closing out estate, whatever. So there's a lot of dominoes here.
Well, Dr. Miller, what I was thinking, we've got to approve the, uh, the house plans, too. So I just didn't know how long that would take. So I figured 120 days wouldn't hold you up in planning. And if somebody want to move it, that wouldn't, they'd have to just come on and do it.
Maybe we're chewing this too long? We all say it cannot be moved?
I didn't say that.
Oh, but Grace said?
I didn't say that. I don't think any of us are, are house movers. So, I mean, I don't know if it can be moved or not. That, that would be up to the- That would be up to the person that might choose to move it. And if they come and say that it can't be moved, and they're not going to move it, they're going to say, well, that's a lost cause. But it is the due diligence, I think, to, of this Board, to try, the commission, to try and salvage what we can. And I think the only way to do that is by moving it to another location, if it is to be salvaged. Taking parts and pieces of it and trying to incorporate it into a new house is, I think it's asking for trouble. And it really, how can it be historically significant if there's a 150-year-old column in a brand-new house? It just, it just doesn't make sense. So, yes, part of the, part of the historical nature of the home is its location. But it's also, I would think, remaining intact is what makes it historically significant as well. So, if you could move it in one piece to one, to another location, that's the best thing you can have going. But if it's impossible, it's impossible, and it's got to come down. The end.
It says here in the, where is that from? The one that Tom gave us said, it might cost $57,000. It's estimated the cost of relocation. So, somebody must have said it could be relocated.
That estimate, which I'm searching for, is for tearing off parts of it and moving part of it, if I'm correct. It would, yeah. Moving the main part of the House is what that's for.
But currently, we do not have anybody waiting in the wings with a check for $57,000 to do that.
Nobody's advertised it yet, so nobody knows about it.
Well, I'm going to speak to Dr. Miller again about what I cornered him on the other day. We're talking about using elements of the House. Perhaps those same elements could be incorporated into a garden house in the grounds adjacent to or part of this wonderful garden that he wants to build. And perhaps they could be incorporated into a garden structure. I don't know what that does to that motion.
That's not an amendment. That's just discussion. Right, okay. And nowadays, yes, Ms. Cheves is, Ms. Musgrove is correct that we incorporate salvage materials all through the House, you know, from exterior, inside as well. So, it doesn't have to be something necessarily built into the House, just used within the home. Okay, so we still have a motion.
We have a motion to approve the demolition or not saving the House. The motion is to approve or not saving the House. That sounds better.
Okay, repeat that, Larry? Wait.
The move is, the motion is to, this group, or this committee, to give permission to, or to approve demolition. Period. The move, demolition, period.
And that was seconded by Mr. Barrett. Any more discussion?
Question?
Yes.
I'm calling for the question.
What?
I'm calling for the question to vote.
You want us to vote?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's just say that. We're calling for a vote, because Ms. Langley is not a professional moderator here. All in favor, say aye.
That's just a blanket demolition that we're voting for.
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries. Four to two, three. Roll call. Okay, four to three. Approval for straight demolition. With no amendment at all.
I have a comment. The lesson we have learned here that we've known all these years is we've got to do something to stop properties to become this bad before we try to figure out if they can be saved. And I don't have the answer to that question, because I know there are certain things that cannot be done with public money on private property. But, you know, we sit here and wait till a property is at this level of discussion where there's no really true good answer. And maybe we need to have a work session on that or something.
Okay, there's no further orders here, so is there a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor, say aye. Chair votes aye on this one. We're adjourned.